I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman to order on Tuesday, April 9, 2024, at 7:30 PM here in the Aldermanic Chamber. The prayer will be offered by City Clerk Van Healy and Alderman Lopez will lead us in the pledge to the body.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty to manage the affairs of our beloved city. Fill us, O God, with a spirit of unity and understanding which enables us to face our multiple problems with a serene mind with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will always be for the betterment and greater happiness of all our fellow citizens. So help us, God. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance, please.
Alderman O'Brien.
Present.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Here.
Alderman Moran.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Govea.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons.
Here.
Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Cle.
Here.
Alderman Dow.
Present.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Here.
Alderman Wilshire.
Here.
Fifteen present, zero absent.
Thank you. The mayor was unable to join us this evening. He sends his regrets. Also joining us, though, is Corporation Counsel Steve Fulton. We're going to skip right down to recognition period.
No remarks.
No remarks? Thank you. I thank you.
We appreciate that.
Reading minutes of previous meetings. There being no objection, I'll declare the minutes of the Board of Alderman meeting of March 12, 2024, be accepted, placed on file, and the reading suspended. Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communication has been received from Sam Durfee Planning Manager regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on proposed petition for street discontinuance Mar Lane. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee Planning Manager regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on Resolution R-24-021 authorizing the sale of city land the Nimco site. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee Planning Manager, referral from the Board of Alderman on Resolution R-24-028 authorizing release of a certain sewer and drainage easement. Communication has been received from Sam Durfee Planning Manager regarding referral from the Board of Alderman on Resolution R-24-029 authorizing release of a certain drainage easement and acceptance of a revised drainage easement. Communication has been received from Lisa Foto, Public Works Director, regarding referrals from Board of Alderman.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file. Public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening? We have one person signed up. That is Paula Johnson.
Good evening. My name is Paula Johnson. I still live at 15 Westbourne Drive, Nashua here. I would have been in Florida, but there's no homeowner's insurance anymore. It's too expensive. That's what Alderman Clemmons and I were just talking about. Sounds funny, but it's pretty sad. First of all, I have a little concern about, I believe it's a Nimco property that's being sold for over $5 million, and I just kind of want to know who did the appraisal for that amount of money on the Nimco property on a commercial appraisal? Was it done with the city or did we have an outside appraiser to do that? Because where land is at a premium now, I don't want to cut the city short if that land is worth more money than it is. Because my concern is we keep building all these apartments, and I understand we need affordable housing, but look at what we've put in already with all the developers. The question is, we build, who's going to come? They're not coming with the kids anymore. So with that, basically, I'm saying, you better start taking a good, hard look at that school department budget because we're going to put up more and more apartments. And if we don't have the kids coming into the system here, we're going to have an inflated school budget here because it was below $9,000, $10,000 when I was on the board until something happened with my election in November. But anyway, that was my concern. And my other concern is basically the $4 million assigned fund balance into the benefit self-insurance fund is that the insurance for the employees. I know that we give a lot back if this is for it. We give them back their deductible, which nobody does in private sector. So I'm concerned with that because one Alderman says all the time, when I ask about the veterans' tax credit, somebody has to pay for it. And that's right. It's we the taxpayers, and it's getting kind of tight out there now. We're getting choked from every angle. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award Passport Labs, Inc.
Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm going to make a motion to approve an award of multi-contract for parking payment services with Passport Lab Incorporated. There's no cost to the city, however, there is a 50 cent per transaction charge for the user. Funding will be through Department 166 Parking.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from John J. Bosver, Chief Executive Officer and Chief Engineer of Penachuck regarding notice of annual meeting of sole shareholders in proxy statement, proxy card in the annual report to the sole shareholder. Communication has been received from John J. Bosver, Chief Executive Officer and Chief Engineer of Penachuck regarding Penachuck's audited consolidated financial statements for years ended December 31, 2023 and December 31, 2022.
There being no objection, I will refer the two communications to the Penachuck Water Special Committee. Petitions?
Petition for street discontinuance Mar Lane Paper Street.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion to recommend indefinite postponement of the petition for street discontinuance of Mar Lane. And may I speak briefly? We all...
Alderman O'Brien, you can't recommend. It has to be just indefinite postponement. You're not recommending it. You're making that motion.
Okay. We'll stick with that. Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Did you want to speak to it?
Yes. Okay. Well, the thing is, we did receive communication from legal, from attorney, landed the city attorney. Basically, the street was abandoned. It doesn't exist. It's a paper street. So therefore, nonexistent. It's best to recommend indefinite postponement.
You've heard the motion? Discussion on that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Nominations, appointments, and elections?
None.
Reports of committees? There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 13, 2024 Joint Meeting on Infrastructure and Police, the Board of Police Commissioners be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 14, 2024 Penachuck Water Special Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the March 18, 2024 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for the oral report of the Joint Meeting of the Planning and Economic Development Committee and the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee meeting held Monday night, April 8, 2024 regarding proposed Resolution R-2440. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you, Madam President. We met last evening to look over the livable Nashua Sustainability Plan. It got pushed out because of the snowstorm. Had a great conversation and presentation from the Sustainability Department and good conversation in the chamber. It passed unanimously through both committees, P E D C and Personnel. And I urge you all to support it. We are looking to get it out in front of everyone in Nashua for Earth Day. Thank you.
Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Downtown Improvement Committee.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the following reappointments to the Downtown Improvement Committee. Mary Lou Blaisdell, 32 Webster Street, Nashua, and Rich Landon, Richard Landon, 7 Tagger Drive, Nashua, with both the terms to expire December 31, 2026. I don't see either of them in the audience this morning. Actually, this morning. This evening? Wow. Okay.
Business and Industrial Development Authority.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Carl Andrade, 12 Mountain Laurel's Drive, Nashua, to the Business and Industrial Development Authority with a term to expire September 13, 2025. I do not see Mr. Andrade in the audience.
Arts Commission.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Jennifer Anan, 9 East Hollis, 90 East Hollis Street, to the Nashua Arts Commission with a term to expire February 1, 2027. Is Jennifer here this evening? You can come right up here in front of the attorney and be sworn in.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Nashua Arts Commission according to the best of your abilities and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God. Congratulations.
Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Charles Matthews, 27 Pendleton Farms Lane, Amherst, to the Hunt Building, Hunt Memorial Building Board of Trustees with a term to expire December 31, 2028. Come forward, please, and take the oath of office.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all of the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the Hunt Memorial Building Board's Trustees according to the best of your ability and agreeably to the rules and regulations of the city charter and the constitution and laws of the state of New Hampshire? So help you God. Thank you, Charlie.
Second reading of R-24-010 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $10,325.50 of assigned fund balance into Fund Number 7024 Opia Debatement Expenditure Trust Fund.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24010 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2410 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-011 authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended federal aid project agreement with the state of New Hampshire and the town of Hudson with the purpose of rehabilitating the Taylor Falls and Veterans Bridges to amend a related agreement for reimbursement with the town of Hudson and to accept and appropriate $2,027,280 for the project.
Alderman Thibodeau. Alderman Thibodeau. Sorry. I didn't mean it. I'm sorry.
I'd like to make final passage of R-24-011 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
Point of order. Did we lose broadcasts? The TVs went out and the on-air went off? I'm not sure if that thing...
We don't have some tonight.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Okay. That motion passes, and Resolution 2411 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-012 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $5 million assigned fund balance into Fund 7026 Capital Equipment Reserve Fund.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to motion for final passage of R-24-012 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2412 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-013 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $4 million of assigned fund balance into Fund 6600 Benefit Self-Insurance Fund.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24013 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Is Director Cummings here to answer the member of the public's question regarding if it goes to insurance or...
He is not here.
...or anyone? I thought I asked just to answer the... And if I could, just respond to the member of public regarding... I don't... The member of the public stated that private companies don't reimburse for deductibles. I can tell you here in Nashua that Harbor Home is one of the largest employers of the city, does do that. So in the private sector, that does happen, and I'm aware of other facilities. I'm not sure I have a complete list, but it is typical in the market to have that happen, and I'll tell you the reason. The plan is cheaper if you get a high deductible plan. It actually costs the employer less to reimburse the cost of the deductible directly to the employee than to get a plan that has a no deductible, a low deductible. It's just, that's, it's just practical to do the reimbursements if that's part of this legislation. I'm not sure because Director Cummings is not here, but I just wanted to answer that for the member of the public. Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2413 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-014 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $500,000 of assigned fund balance into Fund 7025 City Retirement Trust Fund.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24014 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2414 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-015 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $150,000 of assigned fund balance into Department 128 Risk Management Account 89650 Transfer to Property and Casualty Self-Insurance Fund.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-2515 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
No.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, one nay. Fourteen yays, one nay.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2415 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-016 relative to the supplemental appropriation of $53,442 of assigned fund balance into School Department Accounting Unit 91.1.992225, Account Number 53628, Contract Services.
Alderman Dow.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-24016 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion? Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none? Would the clerk call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dow.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yays, zero nays.
That motion carries, and Resolution 2416 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-020 authorizing the sale of surplus property.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of R-24-020.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 2420 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R-24-021 authorizing the sale of city land, the Nimco site.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion for final passage of R-24-021. Speak briefly on it.
Alderman O'Brien.
In case many of you don't know, it was a former business that at one time in the heyday of Nashua's manufacturing, it had a purpose. Now the place is abandoned, and it's in prime real estate location along the river, and the land itself, it's worth its weight in gold and will be good and ready for future development. And hopefully in the future, if the land meets the standards and everything as far as any contamination within the soil, I think it will become a supply to the taxpayers for the city of Nashua. So it'll be well worth our investment. So thank you, Madam President.
Welcome. Motion is for final passage. Discussion? Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Also to address the concerns of one of the public speakers regarding the value. So I was part of, along with my colleague Alderman O'Brien and former Alderman Camo, of assessing the site, who it would be sold to, to develop into apartments. This was actually a good offer that we received. One of the offers was like very lowball, like $700,000 or so, because, you know, you're not looking for fair market value. You're looking for the best bang for your buck and that what they're going to do with the land. If it all works out, they're going to develop it into apartments that will have an affordable component, and they're going to read, they're going to take out the toxins in the ground, which is overall good for the environment. in the ground, which is overall good for the environment. So when you're, when we're selling city property, we're not looking for the best dollar figure. We've got to figure out if what they're going to do with it afterwards is also beneficial. And that's where there's negotiation back and forth. If they're going to say it's going to cost, offer us a dollar, and then we're not going to get anything out of it other than maybe market rate housing and not anything the city wants in regards to affordable housing or green space, you know, then, you know, you don't sell the property. But the folks are offering five million plus what they're planning to do is a great thing, asset for the city. It's going to work out on both hands that we, the city is going to sneak out an advantage, I think. So, thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
I was a little bit tempted to vote against this out of spite because during the RFP process, the consultant stated in an open meeting that he thought the land was too valuable for low-income or workforce housing, and the city shouldn't put that use in the RFP. I know that the committee looking at it, particularly Alderman Moran, have been pushing to make sure that there is some kind of accommodations made for the needs of the city versus just making a buck. So I will be voting for this. I will also express my hope that the future developers of the site do not try to put giant lights on it that violate city code and annoy all the neighbors.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four twenty-one is declared duly adopted. Resolution twenty-four twenty-two has been tabled until the May fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four meeting.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-two-five, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to borrow an amount not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars through the issuance of bonds and/or a loan through the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services State Revolving Loan Fund for the wastewater treatment plant class A bio-solid in maintenance building projects.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four zero-two-five by roll call pursuant to Charter Section forty-nine.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Yes.
Alderwoman Timmons.
Yes.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Govea.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
Yes.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Juddi.
Yes.
Alderman Tebow.
Yes.
Alderman Cle.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Yes.
Alderman Wiltshire.
Yes.
Fifteen yeas, zero nays.
Sorry. That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four twenty-five is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-two-seven, authorizing the expenditure of one hundred thousand dollars from the Conservation Fund for the long-term maintenance repairs and protection of natural and watershed resources.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four oh seven.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to speak to this quickly about how we move the money around. This is actually coming, we're voting to move money, hundred thousand dollars, out of the Conservation Fund's trust fund, and it moves, it moves that hundred thousand dollars into an account so they can spend it. We were at a meeting back in March, and they detailed out, and this, this committee is great with detailing as far as what they spend versus what they need, and it came out to about eighty-five thousand. Yours truly recommended that we round up to a hundred, just in case, because they were ballparking some numbers. So I thought it would be prudent to, to round that up to a hundred thousand dollars. So that's essentially what we're doing. We're not adding any dollars to the general fund. We're just simply moving it. Thanks.
Welcome. Discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-two-eight, authorizing the release of a certain sewer and drainage easement.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four dash oh-two-eight.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries and Resolution twenty-four is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-two-nine, authorizing release of a certain drainage easement in acceptance of a revised drainage easement.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of R twenty-four dash zero-two-nine.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four twenty-nine is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-three-one, approving the cost items of sidebar agreements between the Nashville Board of Police Commissioners and two Nashville Police Department Unions regarding outside details.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R twenty-four zero thirty-one. I'd like to speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
The Chief of Police was here, presented this to the Budget Committee. It got unanimously approved. This will help to allow them to have better success at hiring and retaining police officers in the city of Nashville, which is very important, and also so that the people on these different, outside details will be paid accordingly. And so it's, it's very important to the police department.
Any further discussion? Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. I fully support this. I think, you know, paying for outside detail and doing it in a way that attracts more officers to the city, we certainly need it. And on a sidebar, I was just curious if they, they caught the guy that broke the window last night. Well, me and Alderman Clemmons were here getting out of the, the meeting last night. Yes, no? Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-four thirty-one is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of R dash twenty-four dash zero-four-zero, relative to the acceptance of the twenty-twenty-four Livable Nashville Sustainability and Resilience Plan for Use as Guidance in Planning in Future Decision Making.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I move for final passage of R twenty-four forty.
Motion, I mean, yeah, the motion is for final passage of R twenty-four forty. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Govea.
Thank you, Madam President. I thought the overall presentation and the contents of the document we received of the Livable Nashville Plan were, was good. I would just like to put out a suggestion for the next time we go through something of this kind of size, is that we break down each initiative that was there. And there was a lot to kind of unpack. There was a bunch of smaller initiatives, some bigger ones. I'd like to see us go a little bit more into detail on these, even if it's just a few sentences here, just some overtalking points of what it is. But other than that, I think this is fine. I'll support its passage, but just going forward, wouldn't mind diving into the details a little bit more. Thank you.
Okay. Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. I indulge me for a moment on this. I think this is a really important document that a lot of people worked really hard on. It was in the Energy and Environment Committee. It went to the Conservation Commission. The Sustainability Department in the city has been working really hard to put this plan together. And I think that, that length of it was intentional. This is supposed to be guiding, but we're also looking inward right now. What can we as a city do to combat climate change? So when you look at the actions that are within them, it is actions that we see the Board of Alderman and the city being able to, to take action within the next five years. We also will eventually look outward and start to bring in community, but this is really about our city buildings, our fleets, our waterways, all types of things. And so I think, I personally really liked the brevity of it because the idea is, we say, yes, we, we agree to these things. These are the types of things we want to see in our city, and then we dig in and figure out how to make all those things happen. And all of those things will come back through this committee. So just want to say kudos to Manager Chisholm, Doria Brown, Matt Sullivan, just a lot of really good work going here. Event? Thank you. I'm missing someone. There was a lot of really interesting, like, we put them all up on the wall, and we talked about them, and we, you know, discussed them. And then we went back and made revisions. There was a lot of work that was done to get to where we are here. And I think there's a lot more to be done, but it's really important that as a city, we are putting climates as a forefront for livable Nashville in the future. There were two students who came and spoke about it last night and said, this is our future, and I want to be able to live in Nashville. And I think it feels like a nice twenty-page plan, but it's really about that. So, thank you.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman Govea and Alderwoman Kelly already highlighted most of what I might have mentioned. But the other aspect I just want to highlight is that when it comes to climate change, it really is public health. We don't, we want to be moving forward with a plan like this to make sure that not just our children, their children, and even those in this room who are, you know, I guess we're still all alive and have to breathe the air around, that we understand that the decisions that we make as a, as a board regarding feasibility of buildings, energy efficiency, even going down to what we use for trays in our schools, really impacts the environment around us and how we enjoy our everyday life. I don't think anyone wants to have like a smog-filled city like LA or New York City. You know, there's one great thing about living in Nashville is you get the city plus the, the town feeling. And in some parts of Nashville, you get the rural fair feeling, too. But trying to maintain that through a green initiative like this would be, is a great idea.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. I, I watched the meeting this afternoon, and I, I came away with a couple of points, and this is not a negative in any sense of the word, because I'm going to support this. But I'm always in search for a good metaphor, and I always thought that when we pass something like this, it's like when you sign up for a gym membership. And, you know, you even got a free pencil when you signed up. And I thought that was great. But the important thing is, with the gym membership and with this plan, is that we use it, and we continually use it, and make sure that we're documenting success. I always ask before we pass any law, what happens if we do nothing? What happens if absolutely nothing happened and this resolution wasn't in front of us? I think the city does a fantastic job when it comes to looking out for the environment. I know that with, when we, when we build schools, we put solar panels on top. I know that when there's a truck that we buy out of the SURF fund, that, that we look at the electric vehicle aspect of it. There are charging stations all around. So I think the city does a tremendous job, and, and the folks that run it should pat themselves on the back, that we didn't need this resolution to go in that direction. I think this kind of helps us map it out a little bit more, but I just, I just wanted to say that, that, you know, I'll support it, and I hope we execute on it. Thanks.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
I would like to state for the record that I signaled my intent to support this legislation before I received a pencil. And also, my support for this is largely because of the efficiency of it and the value to the taxpayers. I know Doria Brown is somewhat legendary in these chambers because she managed to save us a tremendous amount of money by locking in energy-efficient deals before the energy prices skyrocketed. And often, we do do environmentally friendly and progressive projects such as adding solar or purchasing hydroelectric, hydroelectric dams, or even investing in CNG well before it's the status quo, because they make sense for taxpayers. And I think there is a, a link between being responsible stewards of our taxpayers' monies and being responsible stewards of our environment. And where we're being responsible with one, we're typically responsible with the other.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and Resolution twenty-fourty is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinance.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-zero-five, authorizing a stop sign on Danbury Road at its intersection with Watson Street.
Alderman Dowd.
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-four zero-zero-five, and speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
And this was kind of an unusual one. Normally, it's an Alderman asking DPW for recommendations on, on this type of thing. As for stop signs, this is one where they called me and asked me to sponsor this legislation because they found an intersection that had a situation that absolutely needed a stop sign for safety. So recommend passing this.
You've heard the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-four dash five is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-zero-seven, authorizing a school safety zone in two school zone flashing speed limit signs on Buck Meadow Road.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-four zero-zero-seven. Speak to it briefly.
Alderman Dowd.
Again, this school zone was designed and in place by the DPW, the traffic manager and the city engineer. And the two flashing speed limit signs are there already and have been for some time. They won't be energized until such time as the school opens, but this is the safety school zone that's required by law.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-four dash seven is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-zero-eight, no parking on the north side of a section of Arlington Avenue.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O twenty-four zero-zero-eight, and I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Senate.
This is one of Crown Hill's signature narrow, one-way streets that travels at a perfect ninety-degree angle. And an issue was identified right at the vertex of that street that was preventing at least two residents from being able to access their driveway anytime somebody would park in this spot. And so DPW asked me to sponsor this so that we can resolve that issue for both of them. I had the opportunity to speak with both homeowners, who are both on board with it. So I hope this board can give it final passage tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-four dash eight is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-zero-nine, no parking on the east side of a section of Toll Street.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of O dash twenty-four dash zero-zero-nine, and I'd like to briefly speak to it.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you very much. Ordinarily, this area should not need a no parking sign because we have a ordinance on the book that says that you cannot park behind a driveway or a section of driveway. The problem is that the, the issue that were happening, people were parking there, they were getting tickets and so on, and it was very difficult for the police to enforce not the parking tickets, but to, to tow and do so on, because they kept saying, there's no, no parking sign. Even though we had an ordinance, it isn't well-known. People don't realize you can't park behind somebody's driveway, or you can't park within two feet of somebody's driveway. So to make things easier, Public Works agreed that this did warrant having a no parking sign.
Motion is for final passage. Further discussion? Alderman Lopez.
It just says a section. Can you say what part of Toll Street?
Offhand, I don't know the, the address. It's in, I think in the, if you look at the ordinance, it actually says what the streets, I want to say Morgan. I'm not sure offhand, but...
Okay, I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was just thinking of the Toll Street Mission, and they have services there, so hopefully they'd be advised.
No, it's not, it's not during, in that, that particular area. It's a different section of Toll. It should not affect, affect them. It's actually in the area where there's multiple, I want to say multiple housing unit type of situation, where they have large driveways. And rather than, I think the problem is that the people that live across the street, it's easier for them to park in the street than to have to play the moving-the-car game. So...
I don't want to press the word to the Alderman of my knowledge of one part of Toll Street any further.
Toll Street's rather large.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-four dash nine is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-one-zero, no parking on the south side of a section of Lock Street.
Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of O dash twenty-four dash zero-one-zero, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Cle.
This is actually a serious issue on Lock Street. The house that we're asking to have the no parking sign to kind of encompass this particular area, the house is literally the, the edge of the foundation and that front door is the sidewalk. The problem also is that that portion of Lock Street does not have much curbing because Lock Street has been paved over and over and over again. So the street and the sidewalk are very close to the same level. That's going to change eventually, but right now, that's not the case. The problem is, is that there, there was a situation, an emergency situation, a number of years ago, where there was a medical crisis in that home, and the ambulance couldn't get to it because there was a car parked in front and the door couldn't be opened. That was one of the situations that happened. Currently, there is a, a situation where a large box truck likes to park in front of that home, even though it doesn't fit. I mentioned that you can't park behind somebody's driveway. I also mentioned you can't park within two feet of a driveway. There's a driveway on both sides of this location, and as such, they're within that two feet. That particular person has been ticketed, towed, and continues to do it. I'm scrawf law. Again, with the Nashville Police and so on, they said it would be easier if there was a no parking sign there. There really should be no parking there. There was, the, the residents of that property came in and spoke and showed how their overhang of their door has actually been hit by the box truck and various other cars. I will admit that there is a civil issue going on between the neighbors there, one particular, in, in particular, but this is not just to punish any one person. This is specifically because it is a danger to the people who live at that residence of thirty-three Lock Street. Anybody who can see it, I may actually have pictures that were shown during the, during the meeting that we have, and the house is honestly right on the edge of the sidewalk. It is extremely dangerous. Public Works has agreed to this, so I would appreciate a, a positive passage of this.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries and ordinance twenty-four-ten is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O dash twenty-four dash zero-one-one, no parking on the, on the north side of a section of Lake Street.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make a motion for the final passage of zero dot twenty-four dash zero-one-one, and I'd like to speak on it if I could.
You can, sure.
There's a, a few residents in this one small section on Lake Street, near a restaurant on Lake Street, and the curbing doesn't allow enough room for cars. So when they have to back out of their driveway, they're having a hard time seeing around the parked vehicles there, that parked there on occasion. And this has been brought before the city engineers, and they have suggested that they could put a couple of signs up on Lake Street to prevent that from being an issue.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, to the maker of the motion through you, I was there today and looking at it, and that, I agree, the spacing's not enough to park a car on that side of the street. It's the same spacing on the other side of the street, and there's no parking anywhere on that side of the street because of that. On this side, that's the same situation goes north and south, or east and west, actually, of, of that area. So I think that whole area ought to be no parking, and not just isolated to that one space. That seems to be looking out for one person when the actual rationale for... out for one person when the actual rationale from the DPW, the traffic manager and the city engineer, would hold true for both east and west of that spot. So I would prefer to see it possibly go back to committee and get the, have DPW take a look and put more no parking signs on that whole side of the street because you can't park a car there without it being in the travel lane. So that's the issue, but it's not just for those two houses. It's for several houses, and I think we would be disrespectful to the people in the other houses if we isolate it to those two spots.
Alderman Lopez.
To the previous speaker through the chair, or the president, wouldn't it be possible to just make more, make another motion and not table this or send it back?
Alderman Dowd.
I would, but it's Thibodeau's ward. I wouldn't want to make a motion that overrode him, and I think that DPW would agree that that same rationale using to authorize those no parking signs follows east and west. I don't know how far, I didn't look to see what the limits were, but it's on Lake Street, there is, if you park a car on Lake Street, anywhere in that area, you're into the travel lane, and that's pretty dangerous, especially when you have a fire station right up the street.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I speak on behalf of the committee as Chair of the Infrastructure Committee. This takes care of a certain problem. I do respect what Alderman Dowd has said, identified another issue. I'm not saying it is not germane to what's coming on, but I don't see it, you know, as a fiver on fire. In other words, it can be brought up by an alderman if they so choose, and brought up where we can have a more extensive look by BPW and make the right motion on that. So making an amendment at this particular time, I think would be kind of premature, where it could be handled separately and thus have fully vetted with the Committee of Infrastructure and BPW.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. I tend to agree with Alderman Dowd. I don't think I'm going to support this tonight. I would rather see, go back to committee and do, if a section of the street's no parking and it's the same way the whole street, might as well have the whole street that way. And I would rather go back and do the whole thing all at once than do it piecemeal. It's just my opinion on it.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. It's not at my ward, but I travel this street in both directions once a day. And I've actually, I've pulled up the very scientific Google Maps in front of me here, and it looks like traveling westbound, that there's already a significant portion of that westbound side that is marked no parking. I'm looking right now just in front of St. Joseph's Hospital. I had traveled about from Bud's Restaurant, which I believe is the location of the current ordinance before us in that direction, and short of a very small section, it looks like it's pretty regularly marked no parking on that side of the road. I don't know if that would influence the decision at all to send it back to committee to reevaluate where this may be needed on Lake Street. I do tend to agree with Alderman Dowd that I'd be really concerned to be traveling that in the morning when I'm barely awake and find a car parked on the side of the road, but I just thought that was worth noting for the discussion. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I'm not going to support sending it back. The thing is, with stuff like this, is that I think less is better. If we have a neighbor that, or a situation that comes up, it's the job and the responsibility of the ward alderman to figure out how to resolve something like that. We've done that. We haven't heard, as far as I know, complaints on other parts of Lake Street, and I don't want to limit somebody from being able to park in front of their house, where they've always been able to do that, maybe on a Saturday afternoon if they have people over, or something like that. So I, you know, I'm not going to support sending it back. I think less is more, less is better. I don't like restrictions like this, generally speaking, unless there's a really good reason for it. So I will support the motion as it stands, but I will not support sending it back.
Alderman Dowd, and then Alderman Sullivan.
Just, less is better is good, would it make sense, but I think that it would be better to have an ordinance that covered an entire area, and I don't think even on the weekends you want anybody parking in that section on Lake Street because it's blocking traffic. It's very narrow, and short of pulling up on somebody's front lawn, you can't park there without blocking the travel lane. But in this instance, the owner of Bud's is here this evening. I thought she was going to speak at some, or something, before the meeting. They've had some issues with this particular neighbor, and they think it's discriminatory, that it doesn't cover a bigger area, that they've never seen an issue with this, and it's just another thing to bring up because the people don't like the restaurant being there.
Alderman Sullivan.
Thank you. More of a point of order. Do we have a motion to re-refer?
No, we don't.
Not yet.
No. Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. As a ward alderman, I understand when somebody comes to us and asks us something, and we do our due diligence, and we speak to Public Works and so on. And while I appreciate the fact that looking at the entire street may be something that we could do in the future, I will support the ward alderman to his, to knowing his ward better than any of us do. And I do think that we can look at this one area, and if he or Alderman at large or someone else comes forward, that we need to do it forward. I think we could look at it at that time.
Alderman Clemmons.
Thank you. Well, it's also my ward too, and it's where I grew up, actually. And, you know, I, to be perfectly honest with you, I don't know if I'm going to support the legislation at all, but I would prefer it to not happen in such a way where we're going from one little tiny section to now the entire street. I travel that street every day, and people make it work. I understand that there's concerns, and in a perfect world, we would like to have no parking on either side of that street, but the reality is, is that people should be driving slow down Lake Street anyway. It's a residential neighborhood. There's kids that go there, people on bikes, things like that, and if there's a car here or there on the side of the road, the reality is, is that you shouldn't be traveling so fast where you would hit that car to begin with. So I don't know where I'm going to come down on this. I certainly don't want to re-refer it, but again, I do appreciate the work of the ward alderman, though, in that something came up from a neighbor, I would assume, and, you know, you take that and you do your best job, and you put your best foot forward, and I think that's what's happened here. So I do give him credit for that.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Thank you, Madam President. First, I'm offended that we would say that the ward alderman's, you know, knows the area better than anybody here. I mean, I appreciate that he lives there, but I've lived here all my life, and I've spent plenty of time on Lake Street, and so has Alderman Clemmons. So, you know, just because you're the alderman for that doesn't mean you know it better than everybody else. So, and he didn't say that.
No.
It was said somewhere else. So that's the first thing. So that doesn't mean that our opinions that are in other wards don't count, because they do. And I think, I don't like any of the no parking things, and I voted for the last couple here because it seemed that they made sense, I guess. But to hear that maybe a neighbor clashing against another neighbor, you know, is, which constituent do you fight for? The restaurant constituent or the neighbor constituent? And so that's where I'm like, well, which one do you fight for? And then if it's that narrow there, and it's narrow the rest of the way, then if you're going to put a no parking sign there, you would have to put one, you know, the next block or whatever. So I'm with Alderman Clemmons. Either do it, or if he doesn't want to do it all, I would prefer not to do it at all either, like, just plain. But if you're going to do it, then I think you have to do it for the rest. And so, you know, I have a constituent that wants to run an investigation on the assessing department. So do I just run and do that because it's my constituent? Should I do that? Should I do that right now? I mean, so I don't always think, you know, Alderman Clemmons said, you know, we listen to our constituents, and we do, but sometimes it may be the right thing, it may not be the right thing, and we've got to judge that. For this instance that I'm talking about with my own thing, I've been struggling with it all day on what to do. So I get that we listen to our constituents, and we've just got to figure out what the right thing is here. And listening to Alderman Dowd and him speaking about Bud's Restaurant, and that it seems like it could be discriminatory towards the restaurant, I prefer not to vote for it. And if we are going to look at it, I want to look at more of Lake Street because it's the same width, so I think we would need to care about the rest of that street. But again, that's just my opinion. It's no offense. I mean, we're all doing what's best for our constituents, and we're trying our best. So I think that Alderman Thibodeau is doing what he thinks is good for his ward. So I don't have a problem with it. I just don't think I'm going to support the legislation tonight in the way it is.
Alderman Moran.
Thank you, Madam President. My colleague to my right here has heard from his constituent, and he also has heard from the restaurant, and he's made a decision to bring this forward. I see no issue with it as it is presented to us. I may not be able to go get pancakes at Bud's tomorrow morning, but, you know, it is my understanding that my colleague from Ward Six was aware that that was an issue regarding their concerns, and it still was brought forward, went to committee, it was heard at committee. I'm an at-large alderman. I didn't have his constituent who asked him to do it, or Bud's reach out to me and say, "Hey, we've got an issue here." I'm on the opinion to support it, and if there's another section that needs to be no parking, someone else can make that legislation and bring it back to infrastructure.
Alderman Gueva.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with what was just said by my colleague at large. I feel what we have here is a solution to an issue that was brought to a ward alderman, and just because that solution's good on one part of the street doesn't necessarily mean it's good for the rest of the street. I think it should be a case-by-case kind of situation, and if we pass this today and we, the ward alderman or an at-large alderman wants to revisit it and do the rest of the street, then let's have that conversation. But let's do what he feels is best for his ward, and let's carry on from there and keep having the conversation. So at this time, I wouldn't be inclined to send back or amend. I feel that would just get bogged down in the process. Let's make some progress on it today and chip away at what seems to be a larger conversation we could have at a committee level. Thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yeah, I certainly don't fault Alderman Thibodeau for bringing the legislation forward. He is looking out for his constituents, but I think there's a bigger story behind it. But certainly not faulting him at all. I think representing your constituents is good, but I sometimes, when I read the reasoning behind the DPW ruling, which are the people that are going to be putting up the stop signs, it didn't make sense to me that you would just do it in that short space. Possibly you should do it in front of the one person that asked, but I don't know if the second person between there and Fairview asked for it as well. But I just think that it's, based on the knowledge of everything, I think it's just a little strange that this is a requirement, because quite frankly, I go there a lot, and I have never seen anybody parked there, never. And they probably don't park there because you're putting your car in danger, so.
Alderwoman Kelly.
Thank you. Interesting discussion. I actually have a constituent and good friend who lives on the corner of Lake and Fairview, and has emailed the city multiple times about accidents directly in his front yard, multiple times. His fence has come out, I think, three times. So this area specifically, I have lots of feelings about, so I understand that this was brought forward because, you know, constituent had a concern here, but I've been trying to, you know, have some conversations around Lake in general and its safety. When these kids walk to school and there's, the sightlines on Lake are terrible. I'm not a city engineer, but it does sound like it's not just this one block that we need to look at. We have to think about it becoming the Speedway and the safety for children in the area, people who are walking, people who are biking, and I do think we need to look at it. I'm torn because I understand the thing that was brought forward to you, but I think there's a bigger conversation to be had about Lake and how we want to start to fix the flow of traffic, how that works, what kind of street it needs to be for families to be able to walk to the middle school or the elementary school.
Alderman Lopez.
I just want to note that Alderman Thibodeau forwarded to the board the communications that he had prior to this as a follow-up to the Infrastructure Committee meeting, and we did have the city engineer look at it, and they recommended and were in support of it.
Further discussion?
Roll call.
Is this just for final passage?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your roll call has been requested. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien.
Clarification. The motion was never made to send it back to committee.
Correct.
So we vote on the main motion and so.
Voting for final passage.
Thank you for the clarification, Madam President. I vote yea.
What was the vote?
Huh?
Nay.
Yea.
Yea, okay.
Sorry.
Correct.
Alderman Timmons.
No.
Alderman Moran.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
Yes.
Alderman Gueva.
Yes.
Alderman Lopez.
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan.
Yes.
Alderman Clemmons.
No.
Alderman Senate.
Yes.
Alderman Jettie.
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau.
No.
Alderman Cleese.
Yes.
Alderman Dowd.
No.
Alderman Kelly.
No.
Alderman Wilshire.
Yes.
Ten yays, five nays.
That motion carries, and ordinance 24-11 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of O-24-012 relative to the compensation of election officials.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you, Madam President. A motion for final passage of O-24-012, and I'd like to speak to it.
Alderman Cleese.
Thank you very much. This, a lot of work went into this particular ordinance and the compensation of election officials, and those are the people that work at the polls, those that are elected as well as those that are picked or volunteered, as to the compensation and payment that they would receive. This was not just something I did, to be perfectly honest. It was something that Alderman Senate had mentioned to me that they had not had a raise in a significant amount of time, so I started moving on it. He and Alderman Clemmons, the three of us worked on it together with the city clerk, Dan Haley. We did a lot of work on it, coming up with the set pay, as well as an hourly rate for the ballot inspectors and registers. And the reason for an hourly rate for them versus where they used to get just a straight pay, a per diem, was the fact that we look at the election as a 20-hour day. So if someone works six hours or eight hours, do they just get halftime? And is that the same thing as someone who's working 11 hours or 12 hours? It became very difficult, I think, for our city clerk to try to figure this out. It also allows for the opportunity of someone just to work four hours at the polls. It opens it up so that we can get more people to come in. The increase in the ward clerk, the ward moderator, and the ward selectmen was to increase the want, so to speak, to run for those offices. As we saw and was commented in the previous meeting, is we often see those ballot sections empty. It's not a lot of money. not a lot of money. It's just one day. But one of the things that kind of hit me that City Clerk Healy had mentioned to me is sometimes people are willing to take a day off from work. Maybe they're going to get paid from their work, but then they get this. So it kind of encourages that. One other thing that we added to this was a $25 payment for in-person training. In-person training is very important in trying to get them to come, even if they've been a ward clerk or moderator in previous years. I think it teaches them the new things that have come up, as well as maybe some problems, lessons learned from previous, previous times. I'm going to more or less kind of end my conversation here. And Madam President, if it's okay to have Alderman Senate and Alderman Clemmons speak after me. Thank you.
Alderman Clemmons had his hand up, so I'll call on him.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam President. The only thing I'm going to add to what Alderman Cle had stated was, was brought up in the committee, the question of why we didn't tie this, these, this compensation to the inflation rate, like similar to what we did for other elected officials, including ourselves. And I, and I can't speak for everyone else, but what I will say is that what the city clerk had made clear was that we want to make sure that whatever we do with this structure here works. And so to me, I think it's important that we give this a couple, you know, an election cycle or two, which we will get between the state primary and the general election, to make sure that, that it's working the way that we want it to, both on, in that, you know, it attracts people to the positions, but also that the accounting of it is, is correct. So I think with that said, you know, if this is successful, if this is something that is good, I fully intend to bring legislation to do that, to tie this to inflation so that we don't have to revisit doing this in the future. But I wanted to get a couple of election cycles through to make sure that, that whatever changes we made here were actually working, and that we didn't need to come back and adjust what we're doing here. So I just wanted that on the record.
Alderman Senate?
Well, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, so Alderman Cle mentioned that it had been some time since the compensation of our election officials had been addressed. I believe the last time that that was actually brought up was 2016. I don't know if everybody in the horseshoe watches the same national news that I do, but elections have gotten significantly more complicated since then. Incidentally, 2017 is when I first became a selectman myself for the first time. I then served two terms as the ward moderator, and the job only got harder every single time we had an election come up. This covers a lot of ground that I don't feel had been previously covered in the previous compensation structure. I do want to recognize Alderman Cle for bringing up the, the pay for the training. Training with the city clerk prior to each election now is more imperative than ever. Election laws are changing almost monthly up at the State House, and it's almost impossible in its current form to stay on top of that on your own. If you're somebody who's doing this, working a full-time job, trying to squeeze in the work that goes into preparation for an election prior, staying on top of those changes to the laws and what's going to become effective during which election, it's really important that we incentivize everyone to be attending those training sessions. So I hope everybody around the horseshoe will give this their full support tonight. Thank you.
Further discussion? Alderman Lopez?
I just wanted to come clean and say I was the one who brought up the tying it to CPI thing, and that was partly because I found it easier to support the raise for elected officials, knowing that we were basically sparing future elected officials, or even guarding against future elected officials having to make that decision in a more controversial climate. And I kind of wanted that for election officials as well, who would then be protected, the elected officials. But the point was raised and brought up that we don't know enough about this, and it wasn't just a straight compensation. There were, like, the trainings were being brought up for compensation instead, and that there were some different dynamics at work that we did need to understand. So, I mean, that makes sense to me, and I do think it does make sense to at least make sure that it works. I think we should be diligent and make sure that we make sure that we know what it does, and we do follow up with it, because otherwise we could look at another Board of Aldermen in future years having to deal with another crisis. And I think we feel that particularly in Ward Four, where we struggle to have, to staff the election, the polling places, and to engage people, largely because there's economic competition. You know, there aren't a lot of people who can both spend an entire day in civic service and afford to make their rent or pay their bills and that type of thing. So I think this is a very important piece of legislation. I thank Alderman Cle for bringing it forward, and I will support it.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thank you, Madam President. You can see that I'm one of the few that did not endorse it. I'm not for spending money. I didn't vote for our own raises, and I was being consistent not endorsing this. I'm the only one here that's done every job at the polls. Ward clerk, ballot inspector, selectman, and I was the moderator for my ward during COVID. So during the, one of the tougher times, I think, that was the Trump election and the whole COVID thing. So I've been there, and I've done it, and I've done it all, and I've done it late into the evening. So I know exactly what, what it is to do these roles, and it is tough that day. You don't get many days that you have to do your role. It's one, two, maybe three days a year, but that day is very tough. And so I get it. But I'll tell you, I didn't do any of those jobs for any kind of pay. I got it. I got paid. No one's going to say, oh, now I want to be a moderator. And I'm sorry. I know we, we are struggling to get good election officials. It's tough. Some of these, I know Clerk Healy has struggled to make sure that we have representation of all parties at every ward, because that's what we need to have fair elections. But this is not going to all of a sudden bring in people. I'll tell you, I worked with people, and no one ever came up to me and said, boy, if I had, you know, this money, I would, I would, I would do this more. Not that you can do it more. It's only a couple of days a year. So it doesn't replace regular salary. And a lot of people that do it are retired because they have the, the time off, and other people just don't want to do it. So I don't know how you incentivize people to, to come in and do these roles. It's more about talking to people and trying to get people interested in politics, in government, and how things work in the city, and caring about fair elections. That's where I think it, it kind of stands. It's, increasing this is not the, is not what's going to do it. So, and I know people will now raise their hand and say, it will. I've done the job. I know it. People didn't do this job for the money. They just didn't. And you couldn't entice people to, to do it for the money. So, thank you.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. No, you're right. It, it's, it's not a magic wand. A magic wand doesn't exist to solve this problem. Is it necessarily going to entice people more? Maybe. I don't know. Like Alderman Thibodeau, I, I did it for six years. I can say with full confidence that nobody I ever worked alongside in Ward Seven did it for the money. It's not a lot of money to begin with. It's not a lot of money now. What it does do is make it a bit more worth their while. I was really fortunate for the past 10 years that I worked for an organization that afforded me eight hours a year for civic service. So I could take a day off, get eight hours' pay, which this is a lot more than. And then I could get paid for this. I recognize that a lot of people aren't in that situation. I'm not in that situation now. But maybe if we raise it a little bit, this is a big raise, but maybe it can incentivize somebody that, well, I can take an unpaid day off because this is going to work out in my favor. Is it going to be the end-all, be-all? No. Do we need to continue going out there and talking to people about this relatively low commitment opportunity to serve their communities and to meet their neighbors, and to maybe get a little bit of personal fulfillment out of serving their community and giving a little something back to the community? Absolutely. I think that onus lies on all of us every time this comes up. Alderman Lopez had sort of made the distinction between elected officials and election officials. Forty-five of the roles that we're talking about in this situation are elected election officials. There's five per ward. And that's the concern, is some years we're looking at ballots where only two people are running for three selectman seats. Some years, we're looking at Ward Six, and I don't want to pick on you, Alderman Thibodeau. It's just the one that sticks out in my mind, where nobody's running for any of them.
Well, Ward Four, you know.
Ward Four as well. Thank you, Alderman Lopez.
I mean, it's not that I can, it's, it's why I've made the comments.
No, and it's not to pick on. I mean, we've had empty ballot spots in Ward Seven, too. But if the total package is a little bit more worth the while of the individuals that might be willing to step up and do it, I think that's a worthwhile cause. Again, the, the pennies that we're throwing out for people to do this increasingly difficult job that's only going to get harder. 2024, I'm sort of crossing myself every day that I'm not going to be the one standing there on election day, because 2024 is going to be tougher than 2020. I was there as a moderator on 2020 as well. That wasn't easy. This isn't going to be any easier. So if we can dangle the carrot a little bit, make it a little bit more enticing, I think that's a worthwhile endeavor.
Alderman Cle?
Thank you, Madam President. I've already made my comments as far as how I feel that this will help that. But I do want to, you know, based on the estimates that City Clerk Healy has given us for this upcoming elections with the primary and the, you know, the state primary and the general election, we're looking at a total of increase of $43,075. I don't think that's a whole lot of money when we're talking about trying to get these people to come in. And yes, it would be nice if everybody just came in and said, it's my civic duty. I'm going to run for this office, and I'm going to do this, and I'm going to do that. I absolutely agree. That would be a wonderful thing, but that's not the reality. And politics are getting angrier and angrier as we go. I recently spoke to a constituent. First words out of his mouth to me, and he didn't mean to be rude in any way, but what party are you? As he was asking me a question. And I said to him, it's the city. We don't, that's not something that's necessary. So politics are becoming more angry. And I think that if we can incentivize people, as low as this number is, truthfully, as low as this is, we're talking about a little bit over $43,000 on it. And this is a guess, because we don't really know who's really going to show and who's not going to. But based on his numbers, and, and I trust that he knows what he's talking about, and the spreadsheet he did provide the committee, we're looking at about approximately $43,000. Thank you.
Alderman Moran?
Thank you, Madam President. I threw you to the city clerk. Just a clarifying question. If there's no officials to moderate or clerk these wards, what, what does the, your office do in those circumstances?
So we, we have to have an official in that capacity at the polling location. Some of the wards, we did struggle with getting people to sign up, and we ended up, we, we did fill those, we did some outreach. One of the wards was Ward Two. We did find a moderator. It has to be someone in that ward. For this past presidential primary, the, just for an example, the Ward Two, that person never was a moderator prior their first election. So I spent the majority of the day at Ward Two with them, kind of training them and showing them what to do, with the understanding that if I had to go to another ward, you know, I would be back, but that was the primary location. But you have to staff the ward. So you have to, in calling the state for guidance on this is you have to find someone. So it's got to be someone in that ward, and it's, it's got to be staffed. So there's really, there's not a lot of to-do besides try to see if someone will fill in on that role. There's no really way around it. We do have, like, the deputy city clerk can go to some of the polling locations and assist and direct, but you have to have someone to sign the paperwork that is, say, Ward Two resident if that's Ward Two, or Ward Three resident if it's Ward Three. So it's got to be filled.
Follow-up, Madam President?
Alderman Moran.
I throw you to the clerk again. Mr. Clerk, do you, are you supportive of this legislation?
This legislation, yes. So I did work with Alderman Cle, Alderman Senate, and Alderman Clemmons on, on this legislation. It's not just about increasing the pay to draw in more people. It's partly on the accounting aspect. How do you pay when the ordinance says a full-day pay? Someone worked 14 hours, someone worked 18 hours. What are we paying them? So it's tried to figure out what's a fair way to, to, to pay everyone. And we do have a few residents that they don't sign the payroll. They offer to just do it for free. So when it said that, you know, it's not that much money, people don't do it for the money, we do have people that actually waive being, being paid. So that gives us more workers at that location than we can actually decrease. We can actually save some money that way with, with people that don't elect to be paid.
Thank you.
No further discussion? All those in favor of final passage, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
That motion carries, and ordinance 2412 is declared duly adopted. New business resolutions.
First reading of R-24-041, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $3,750,000 for the city's sewer infrastructure improvement and sewer and drain casting replacement programs.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-24-042, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $925,143 for various wastewater capital improvements.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Dow. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-24-043, approving the annual action plan for the community development block grant, CDBG, in home investment partnership, home programs for fiscal year 2025.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderwoman Timmons, Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-24-044, authorizing the filing of applications in execution of grant agreements with the U.S. Department of Transportation for grants under the Urban Mass Transportation Act of 1964, as amended for fiscal years 2025 and 2026.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Cle, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Human Affairs Committee.
First reading of R-24-045, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended transportation alternatives program, federal aid project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of upgrading sidewalks and creating bicycle lanes on Lock Street and Whitney Street, and to accept and appropriate an additional $24,309.81 for the project.
Additional sponsors: Alderman Moran, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, Alderwoman Kelly, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber.
First reading of R-24-046, authorizing the mayor and city treasurer to issue bonds not to exceed $700,000 for various improvements at the solid waste department, Four Hills landfill.
Additional sponsors: Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Moran, Alderman Senate, Alderman Cle, Alderman Dow, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, and schedule a special Board of Aldermen public hearing on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldemantic Chamber. Resolution 24- Resolution twenty-four forty-seven has been withdrawn. New business ordinances?
None.
Period for general public comment. We have seven people signed up. Stephen Scare.
Good evening, Madam President. I wanted to talk about how international developments should inform our policies in the city regarding sex and gender. Even as I was working on this, England released its caste review, which came about from the, they have the world's largest pediatric gender clinic. They closed it down because they were finding so many kids, the majority of them had serious problems, mental health problems, about a third of them had severe autism. What they, what their conclusions were after going through the research thoroughly, hundreds of research documents grading the research, is that puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones have zero mental health benefits, much less helping people with suicide. And they worked on this for years and years. They warn against social transitions, as we do in our high school, because social transitions lead to medical transitions. And some of the dangers that they talk about is with puberty blockers, of course, their problems with cognitive development are likely, bone weakness, sterility, your sexual organs aren't going to develop, cross-sex hormones, cancer, thrombosis, heart disease, thinning of the vaginal walls, permanent pain from sex, all for no benefit at all. And it's not just them. Medical experts in Sweden combed through nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-four abstracts, assessed them by quality, and concluded that hormone treatments of gender dysphoria among minors should be regarded as experimental medical treatment rather than standard procedures. So what I'm here to ask you to consider, right now, we've got the affirmative care model, which I mentioned last time. A child who still believes in Santa says-
One minute.
I'm, thank you. Says, I'm transgender. And that's affirmed. That's the medical policy we have under the American Academy of Pediatrics. We teach that in our schools. We have gender-affirming spaces, people that are there, safe spaces to affirm your gender, posters up about your gender identity, this part of you that's supposed to be the real you, not your body. And there's no science to this. There's no proof this helps.
Thirty seconds.
So what I'm going to ask you to do is look at what we're teaching in our library, our symbols, our ceremonies. Look at the caste review. You can read that online, it's very easy to read. And think about what, if I'm right, if all these countries, all these European nations are right, and what you can do to keep kids from becoming permanent lifelong patients as opposed to permanently harming them. Thank you.
Nicholas Sklera.
Hello, board and guests. I'm Nicholas Sklera, Two Paddington Place here in Nashua. Once again, I'm here to compel you, the Board of Aldermen, to write, support, and pass a comprehensive resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza and an immediate end to the ongoing genocide. Two weeks ago, we, as people who see and recognize the humanity of the Palestinians, asked you all to give your opinion on a ceasefire resolution and your comment period after this public comment. Unfortunately, many of you decided to speak about a myriad of things outside of a ceasefire. Even more of you decided to completely pass your turn and didn't speak about anything. I think I speak for all of us here that we hope that each and every one of you speak up in your time after this. Aside from that, regarding those of you who did not speak up after this public comment two weeks ago, common thread throughout all of them was the questioning of why this must be done at the Nashua level. I believe that we, as the public speakers, made a pretty cogent argument as to why. It certainly is an issue for Nashua to come out with a statement, but maybe you didn't understand, or maybe you just thought differently. I'll try to explain it again. Outside of the fact that you have many people here telling you that this is what we want, and you are supposed to be our duly elected representatives who are supposed to listen to your constituents, Nashua is inherently connected to this issue. We have B. A. E. systems in our city limits, and Nashua is the home to many workers at nearby Raytheon and Elbit Systems. All these corporations right now are making historic profits off the ongoing genocide in Gaza. If we're okay with housing a company like B. A. E., why are we not comfortable writing a ceasefire resolution? Our Defense Department contract's inherently worth more to the city than Palestinian lives. Furthermore, Nashua is not new to stepping, into stepping into foreign affairs. In twenty twenty-two, Nashua was very open about its anger at the Russian invasion of Ukraine in an article in the Nashua Telegraph dated March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two, titled, quote, "City to Host Flag-Raising Speaking Program in Show of Support for Local Ukrainians and Their Nation." Mayor Donches actually pretty eloquently spoke as to why Nashua did this. I quote from him in the article. "Nashua stands with members of our community who have friends and family in harm's way in Ukraine," Mayor Jim Donches said of the escalating Russian invasion of the Ukraine, which continues to claim lives, injure thousands, and separate families as Russian troops bomb civilian targets, which include large residential complexes and hospitals. I hope that rings familiar as what's going on right now in Gaza. "We hope this small show of support will comfort local Ukrainians and foster hope for peace and freedom in their homeland," Donches said. With all due respect, I can't help but notice that there is a stark difference in the attitude of this board on the grounds of being in solidarity with the Palestinians here in Nashua and the Ukrainians in Nashua. I don't remember any Alderman saying that it was a waste of time and not applicable to the ceremony and coinciding statement of solidarity. I wonder why that is. Again, no one's suggesting that Nashua's going to come in with a ceasefire resolution and save the Middle East. That being said, to quote a very active political activist in Nashua who posted on a Facebook page, can you imagine if Nashua had any control over Washington D. C. with the coinciding laughing crying emoji? I think that's a pretty anti-democratic statement to make. The whole point of representational democracy is for you to represent us. Thank you.
David Sklera.
Good evening, board. My name is David Sklera. I'm at Two Paddington Place in Nashua, here to request that the Nashua Board of Aldermen pass a resolution seeking a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. Reminder that local government is our most representative form of government. If you can't represent us, then who can? This issue does affect our community. Islamophobia and racism regarding this issue is real. You may have noticed that my son is wearing a kaffiyah. It's a garment worn in solidarity with the Palestinian people to bring awareness to their plight against apartheid. Nelson Mandela wore a kaffiyah in solidarity with the people of Palestine. He knows something about apartheid. Well, just this past week, a self-proclaimed activist in Nashua, who has endorsed and campaigned for several of in this room, bragged about it, in fact, referred to the kaffiyah multiple times after being explained what it was as a black-and-white tablecloth. Said this multiple times, and also said that Palestinian protesters are part of a cult. Another Nashua resident and activist referred to innocent Gazans as murderous animals. So this is a Nashua issue. It is something that's affecting our communities and our citizens. You were elected to represent your constituents. Have the courage to bring forth a resolution, and then vote on it. Allow us to know where you stand. If you are silent, we will be left to believe that you are not in favor of the resolution. It's that simple. Let us make our decisions in the future based on that. Hundreds of other local municipalities around the country have done so. It's up to you, Nashua, to make a stand. Thank you.
Heather Robinson.
I'm here for the Bud's Restaurant.
You need your name and address for the record, please.
It's Heather Robinson, twenty-six Lewis Street in Nashua. I'm here about the Bud's Restaurant. The problem with that is that Bud's Restaurant has been there since almost like nineteen sixty-two or sixty-six, regardless of all. We've all lived here for, I've been here all my life, I was born and raised. I've not ever seen multiple accidents on that road to put up signs stating no parking. It all comes down to common sense. I do believe that the neighbor that just moved from New York has an issue with the restaurant and her personal self on what's going on. There's never been one parked car in front of the restaurant. I've worked there for over a year, and there's never been one complaint since I've worked there and since I've known the store to be leamos and the restaurant at the same time. I think it all comes down to harassment and singling out. So if you were to put those signs up and down the road, it'd look very tacky in my eyes because I've known that street all my life, and it would be very eyesore. It'd be quite the eyesore because everyone has common sense. I know she had mentioned there was accidents, not the street, I apologize, but that's very few compared to multiple accidents in other roads. And I feel like the community has common sense not to park their cars in front of anyone's home unless they've gotten permission. And I've not ever once seen anyone, if you've driven down Lake Street, you know that you've not ever really seen that many cars parked on Lake Street for the width, the sidewalks, and for the way it is. And at Bud's Restaurant, they've always parked on the left-hand side down, I'm not sure of the street name, it's Euclid, yes. They always parked on that side of the road. They've not ever parked up and down the street of Lake Street. So putting up the signs just in particularly for Bud's Restaurant would be a menace and a harassment to not only the customers, but the owners of the restaurant.
One minute.
So, and I just feel like people have common sense not to park in other people's areas, and especially on Lake Street. I've not ever seen it happen, I've never done it, because your car will get hit. It's just common sense, and everybody has it. I hope, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Brick Kevey. Kevry, I'm sorry.
You are right, Brick Kevey, eight Bristol Street. Hello and good evening. My name is Brick Kevey. I'm a Nashua resident, and I stand before you here tonight to ask you to draft and vote for a permanent ceasefire resolution and to stand for an end to the horrific violence and genocide that is happening to the people of Palestine. For six months now, we have watched countless videos of bombs leveling neighborhoods, of families unable to get anything to eat, and children's bodies lying bloody and mutilated in the streets. We cannot, as a community, sit back and watch as these atrocities take place. At the very least, we must be able to say that we do not stand for this. Back in January, when New Hampshire voters took to the polls for our primary election, about fifteen hundred people wrote in ceasefire. Fifteen hundred New Hampshire residents, within just a couple weeks' notice, decided to speak up for what we believe and say that the most important decision we can make right now is one that ends the killing of countless innocent civilians. Here in Nashua, we have our own worries. We have our housing issues, we worry about our kids' education and safety every day. But how can we say that we truly care about our own community if we cannot extend that same care and empathy to people everywhere? How can we say that we truly care about the housing crisis here if we do not also care about the fact that people no longer have homes in Gaza and are forced to live in overcrowded refugee camps? How can we say that we care about our kids here if we do not care about the children starving to death in Gaza? We have received word from all the people that this is not a concern of the city of Nashua, and I could not disagree more with that statement. It is not the basis, is it not the basis of our democracy that individuals and communities make their voices heard in order to enact a change on a larger scale? We are asking our representatives to stand for the beliefs of our community. We are not asking that you single-handedly draft a resolution to the U. N. We are just asking that you state that Nashua cares not only about the lives and well-being of those directly in the community-
One minute.
-but also those across the globe struggling to survive. Please take the time to show that people of Nashua, the state of New Hampshire, and the United States, that we do not stand for genocide, we do not stand for the slaughtering of civilians, and we do not just sit back and allow this to happen. Thank you very much.
Bradley Conway.
Good evening, counsel. Again, my name is Bradley Conway. I currently work in Nashua, and I love the city. As I was signing up our list of speakers at the beginning of this meeting, as I usually do for this evening's general comment period, I was informed that the Nashua Board of Aldermen has adopted a new rule not to allow folks who are absent at the start of the meeting to sign up for comment. We had eight members of the Muslim community lined up to speak tonight who were not able to arrive on time because their fasting for Ramadan ended at seven twenty-three P. M. This board knew in advance from prior discussion that their Muslim constituents were planning to speak, who were planning to speak in support of ceasefire would be late, and they were told that would be fine as long as they would be, they would be on the sheet. It appears to me that this board has changed the rules to silence their Muslim constituents and sabotage their constituents' ceasefire campaign. Before arriving at the meeting tonight, I was holding out hope that some of the leaders in this room might have been watching the news and feel as desperate as we do to pressure our federal representatives to stop arming and green-lighting the genocide in Gaza. I'll ask you all again. Please give voice to our campaign by using the city of Nashua's resolution process to affirm that freedom and justice for all also means freedom and justice for Palestine. Please affirm that the city stands against ethnic cleansing and mass murder. Representative Custer and Senator Hassan and Shaheen have a personal financial interest in supporting Israel's genocide unconditionally. They need to see plainly that cities across their districts and across the state stand in solidarity with Palestine and won't be brow-beaten by insidious AIPAC talking points. This campaign is urgent. We do not have another two weeks to wait. The effects of malnourishment in a child last a lifetime. According to the U. N. Relief Agency, UNRWA, one in three children in Gaza under the age of two are acutely malnourished. As if that weren't enough-
One minute.
-Israel has killed, on average, eighty-five children per day for the last six months. That's four Sandy Hook massacres per day for a hundred and eighty-five days, and that's just children, not including innocent men and women. I have an anecdote that I hope puts some of you on the spot. Russia invaded Ukraine on February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. By March fourteenth, less than three weeks later, the city of Nashua had put out statements of solidarity with Ukraine and held a vigil.
Thirty seconds.
With this in mind, I'll voice the question that I think everyone is wondering. After six months of invasion and starvation in Gaza, where journalists, doctors, humanitarian aid workers, children, and civilians have been killed at a far greater scale than that of Ukraine, where is the city of Nashua's statement of solidarity with Palestine? I think it begs another obvious question, so I'll put it out there. Does the city of Nashua only care about the suffering of white people? This issue affects the Nashua community, and it's time to take action. In addition to a ceasefire resolution, we want divestment at the city level. We also want the board to establish a committee for ethical investing for the most immediate purpose of identifying, divesting, and preventing business with all entities involved in the U. S. military-industrial complex.
Point of order, Madam President, just if you or maybe Attorney Bolton could respond to the, was there a rule change regarding signing up that I was unaware of, that the board as a whole took a vote recently?
Not to my knowledge.
I believe that's always been the rule.
It's always been the rule?
Yeah.
Because I would be very concerned that this board took a vote without me here to discriminate against people.
There has been no recent rule change. That has always been the rule.
Okay. I just wanted to make, thank you.
In that case, can I have an option to speak? Because I was drinking my fast. Today was the last day Ramadan, tomorrow was the Eid celebration, so we won't be late anymore.
Odeon has already raised this in court.
We're not going to allow it tonight. You weren't here to sign up to speak. Maybe you can speak at the next meeting. Paula Johnson. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. My name is Paula Johnson.
We will be in court over this. We will lose, and then everyone will get to speak as long as they want, and I won't count.
With all due respect, on the Shabbat, it's a Jewish holiday.
You are taking up someone else's time. Please be silent.
I should have some time, too.
No, you weren't here to sign up for it.
And you know why.
You weren't here.
Because it's a holiday in the Muslim tradition.
Well, I'll tell you something. My name is Paula Johnson, fifteen Westbound Drive. I'm Jewish, and we have meetings on Jewish holidays. I was sitting on this board, and I still came to meetings. And when I was on this board, you know, if you weren't here and you didn't sign up, no one can sign up for you, and it's, what's fair is fair. They didn't change the rules for anybody here. And so when my holiday came, either I was here or I was home celebrating my holiday. That's just the way it is. I mean, there's no discrimination here. I have to say this, you know, I've been around Nashua, I've been on elected boards since two thousand, and I've never seen the rules change, other than the three-minute rule between both boards. Do I think three-minute rules is fair? Absolutely not. But you know what? It is what it is, and that's the way it is. You know, I hope my time isn't going to be taken away from me because it was beginning.
It is, that's a rule.
Okay, it is a rule, that's fine.
Enough.
That's fair. But you took my time.
Yeah, two minutes.
That's fine, you took my time.
Well, complete as much as you want.
I will, because you took my time.
Enough. Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I wasn't going to come tonight, but I just wanted to kind of comment on Alderman Moran's comments about me last week. I've known Alderman Willsher for a long time, and she had a problem with what I said about the gavel, then with somebody, which the gavel should have come tonight when somebody overstepped their three minutes, but-
gavel should have come tonight when somebody overstepped their three minutes. But she and I could have discussed it. And, you know, I've known her for a long time, since I sat on the board back in 2001, and I think Alderman Willschir and I have a very good relationship that if something bothers, we could talk about it. So I didn't think it was really intended for anything else. Also, I just want to say, when you were talking earlier tonight about insurance, I've worked for big companies, and so did my husband, and nobody ever, you know, when our deductible went up high, nobody ever paid for anything like that. But that's neither here nor there. That's minute now. I think the issue here at hand is that, you know, what's going on in this chamber a little bit with everything. I'm a little bit disgusted tonight. You know, people think that we should give them some leeway, and what's fair is fair. Nothing ever changed in this chamber, and I will back, and I'm never back my elected officials, but I will back my elected officials tonight because I think it's what's fair. And Alderman for Ward Aide, you and I have, when, I could say you and I are thinking the same and voting the same. There's got to be something wrong here. But anyway, you know, it's pretty there. But I will say, I will back you up on this signing up because nobody was ever allowed to sign up for anybody. It was always strict because if you're not here, you're not here, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Fifteen more people down the line.
Remarks by members of the Board of Aldermen? Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Madam- I want to start by thanking Nashua Strong for coming and speaking today and doing their presentation. While I don't always agree with everything that they have to say, I do think many of their ideas are at least worth discussing. And what happens, happens in that discussion. But I do like to see the community coming to the recode, e-code, those type of meetings. I was disappointed in some of the meetings that we had, and not enough of the community was there. Their voice needs to be heard as far as zoning, and not just the businesses. The average homeowner or tenant or any person that lives within the city or works within the city. And Mr. Fiari asked me to clarify. He kept talking about doing fifty-five to seventy miles an hour on the DW Highway, and I don't think any of us would even consider doing that. He meant the Everett Turnpike. So he just wanted to make sure that I clarified that for this meeting. I also want to thank Parks and Rec. This past weekend, it was brought to my attention that a number of trees had fallen across the fire road at Greeley Park, the west side of Greeley Park, and they really had. It was quite dangerous. A lot of walkers go through there with both their dogs and just themselves, baby carriages and so on, and they were unable to traverse through that. But my biggest concern, because there are other places that people could walk, was the fact it was a fire road. And there were two very large trees that were across the fire road, and Parks and Rec did take care of them on Monday, I believe it was. The other thing is that truly the people that I would like to speak to about this aren't here, but there is a very large mud pool lagoon that is at the base of the new build, where the Barker property would be. And I have some major concerns, but for those residents that are walking through there, it is very dangerous. It's a lot deeper than you think it is, and I hope that they will try to avoid it. I've never seen anything as bad of that as Greeley Park. And it is runoff from the Raisman property that's being built, and it is creating, I believe that's the reason why those very large trees fell. The whole root ball and everything came down, so I am quite concerned about that. And I also want to thank this board for passing the two no parking. And I know that many people don't like that, but these were true safety issues, the no parking ones in War Three. So thank you.
Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I actually didn't hear you call for remarks, so thank you for doubling back to me. I just wanted to thank everybody for supporting the Sustainability Plan. It's going to be really important work, and I agree that we have to do the work now that it's out there. And I also just wanted to let you all know that the Sustainability Fair, our second annual one, will be happening on Saturday, April 20th, at the library. It's been a group effort. It's the second year in a row, but the Energy and Environment Committee will be there. There's a ton of other vendors. There'll be EVs and lots of great discussion on green everything. So please come and enjoy.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President. As I said earlier, I'm not a fan of no parking in places, and I'm not a fan of free parking everywhere on every city street we have. So I go to both extremes, I guess, at some points. But there's certainly a lot of places I could probably go in my ward and say, oh, that's not safe. We should put up a sign there. But I feel bad that Ms. Robinson didn't speak prior to us voting on the legislation. I would have preferred to hear her point of view. I grew up on Euclid Avenue for, I don't know, first eight years of my life or whatever. So I walked to Leontes Market, you know, a million times, buying baseball cards. My grandparents were in New Dunstville. I wasn't that far around from Lake Street either. So I know Lake Street very well. I know that corner very well. So I feel for her and I, again, I just want to apologize that she didn't get to speak ahead of time. You know, to the comments about the Mideast stuff, it's not simple. And for someone to say, you know, do what your constituents want to do, I talked about this earlier with our constituents, right? I have just as many constituents calling me on the opposite side of that, who are Jewish and may not want us, or not even Jewish, just people that may not want us to do a resolution, as many as call about wanting a resolution. So which constituents do we listen to, right, on an issue like that? So, the Ukraine-Russian thing, I don't think that's a 100% apples to oranges, or it's more apples to oranges, not apples to apples. You know, there's bad things happening on both sides here. And so I think, you know, Hamas did some bad things, Israel did some bad things, and yes, I feel for the Palestinian people. Yes, I feel for the people that were killed on the Israeli side. I mean, that's only human. But I still am not for passing a resolution on that because I just don't think it's the right thing to do. We have constituents that believe both sides are right, and, you know, how do we choose? And just the last quick thing. Well, they don't want to come here because they think they're afraid.
All right, no conversation with the audience, please.
Well, you know, I'm definitely not going to be bullied into doing a resolution. So people can keep calling my phone. People can keep emailing me. That's not the right way to get something done. It's just not. It doesn't matter. It's not going to happen. I'll tell you right now, it's not going to happen in this horseshoe. So you can keep coming every week, and you can keep speaking, and, you know, you can keep breaking the rules, and that's fine. Why should I go to one constituent and not the other? I'm supposed to care for all my constituents, and I hear all of them.
That's right. I made a decision.
I made a decision. I'm not doing a resolution. That's my decision. That's my decision. And so the other thing I want to bring up is, and again, I'm probably going to be told to shut up, but it's important to me, and I think it's important to constituents in this city, because I think they're being asked all over the city, what happened in assessing? What happened? And I know I'm not supposed to talk about it. But to me, that's an important thing that people want to know about. It's important to people to know what's going on in City Hall. Now, we're Aldermen. We're not supposed to really dive into personnel issues. I understand that. There's ways we could do that. I'm choosing not to do that, but I still want to know why. Not for myself, but for the people out there that are asking these questions. I think it's their right to know. Whether it's my right to know or not, I think it's their right to know. I'll leave it at that.
Alderman Jettie.
Thank you, Madam President. So I wanted to explain my no vote on Resolution 24-015. That's the resolution of the supplemental appropriation of 150,000 to risk management. I was too slow on the trigger, you know, so I didn't get the chances to say anything before the vote started. So I had to vote no because when I looked at the agenda under this resolution, it says Budget Review Committee with recommendation, excuse me, Budget Review Committee with recommendation for indefinite postponement. And so I don't know what happened to that recommendation, why, you know, why the committee suddenly asked us to vote for final passage. But that's why I voted against it. So I don't know what happened there, but I didn't bring it up because I was too slow on the trigger. The other thing, I really enjoyed the discussion about the Lake Street no parking. I was biting my tongue. I couldn't help but observe that, you know, this is something that was brought before the Infrastructure Committee. The input from the traffic engineer was sought and obtained, and the Infrastructure Committee discussed it, and they've recommended final passage. And, you know, I've oftentimes found myself in a position where, you know, at a meeting, I have disagreed with what a committee has done, and I was reprimanded for not having attended the meeting and have not, you know, not made my objections known to the committee at the time, and that told that we ought to just follow what the committee recommended. And I just couldn't help but, you know, make the observation that a lot of those same people, you know, were arguing against what the committee recommended in asking that it be re-referred. I think when there's a legitimate question, you know, it certainly should be referred back to the committee, and that the committee ought to have a chance to discuss it. But I thought it was an interesting discussion. Thank you.
Alderman Senate.
Thank you, Madam President. Just want to briefly once more thank everybody for their support for the raise for the election officials. I recognize that I may have gone on a little bit and gotten a little heated over the matter, but it's something that's deeply important to me. It's something that I'm deeply passionate about. Working the polls was my first foray into public service, and it was rewarding. It was an opportunity to meet my neighbors in a neighborhood that, at the time, I was new to. I signed up to put my name on the ballot without ever having actually done the work. So I really had no idea what I was getting myself into. But ultimately, I'm of the belief that it led me to be sitting here with you all tonight, and it really is a great first step for anybody who's considering public service or giving back to their community. And so I really would encourage anybody in the chamber or watching at home tonight, you know, our next municipal election is not until November of 2025, but it's not too early to start thinking about it now. You know, it's worth recognizing that anybody who wants to run for moderator, clerk, or selectman is held to the same standards that we are as Ward Aldermen. You have to go out and introduce yourself to your neighbors and get those fifteen signatures to put your name on the ballot. It is very valid public service. It is worth your time regardless of the pay that you'll receive, and I really hope that next year we see a lot more names on the ballots in all nine wards. Thank you.
Alderman Clones.
Thank you, Madam President. I will, so I'm just going to state for the record again that I will not be supporting a ceasefire resolution. I've stated that in the past. I will reiterate that tonight because it was asked that we come out and state where our position is. That is my position. I do not support it. I will not support it. And the reason for that is because I do not believe that it is a municipal issue. And so while I welcome everyone in public comment to continue to express their opinions, mine will not be changed. Thank you.
Alderman Lopez.
So Chris DeWaz emailed the board regarding opioid overdose numbers, and he was comparing them to last year's, but I think the subtext was he was also comparing them to when the opioid crisis first emerged. And for me, that struck home because I was on the front lines of that before it was really declared as an opioid crisis. And I was watching people that I had worked with for months and years trying to build better lives for themselves suddenly turn up dead, you know, and the community trying to figure out what was going on, what was the story that was happening. And the same issues were coming up, but nobody seemed to be doing anything. So for that reason, I am empathetic to people coming here because they're trying to advocate for a cause that they are personally affected by and where people are, in their mind, dying every minute, every second, every day. It's real to them. And I can understand that it must be frustrating to watch us have a meeting about parking spaces and trees and, you know, renewable resources and all that, because that's not germane to that crisis point. But I think it's also important to remember that because that's your crisis point, that's also what you're focused on, and it's not what everybody else is trying to do. And here in the Board of Aldermen, we have many, many responsibilities, and some of them may not seem urgent in the context of what's happening overseas, but a person getting a parking sign in front of their house could be something that does affect their life safety, as Alderman Cle pointed out, or it could be something that creates an uncomfortable problem for them, as I have frequently pointed out with overnight parking and people having to walk for blocks and blocks just to pick up their car every day. That's quite a pebble in the shoe for someone who's trying to support their family and has to get up very early to do that. But it's not something that's real for someone who may live in a more suburban area and has a wide driveway and says, well, if people want to park near the house, they should just get a house with a parking space. So there are issues that affect some very, very deeply, and there are issues that affect others very, very deeply, and I think we have to remain respectful to all of that. As the Alderman for Ward Four, I do represent not only all of the Christian churches and religious practices, but also the mosques. I try to remember that there are many, many different faiths and many different beliefs. And I know that we've faced our share of discrimination repeatedly as a community, not only for our stigma as tree streets or low-income residents or whatever, but it wasn't too long ago that there was rocks being thrown through the mosque windows. So I'm sensitive to the kind of vitriol and combativeness that can happen when issues overseas are brought here to Nashua. And I think that's also why a lot of Aldermen are hesitant to weigh in on it because it really is a very difficult subject for us when we represent thousands of people with different beliefs and different priorities and different needs. And they have the right to speak, too. And speaking over them because your rights to speak are more urgent doesn't necessarily make them more sympathetic to your cause. I would note for the record that I believe it was my constituent who was not able to sign up for public comment. And to that end, I would encourage that constituent to write a letter that I will make sure is attached to the next Board of Aldermen meeting as a communication. I want to make sure that everybody's heard. I am trying to find a way to put a resolution forward that would satisfy people that want it and are very, very specific about their intentions and very, I would say, aggressive because they're passionate about the issue. I would prefer that that passion be directed towards something that's easier for me to do, but that doesn't seem to be the case. But I would also argue that if there's going to be any support for any action, whether it is a resolution on the board, which obviously one Alderman has pointed out, there's not a clear role for, or even just community support, then that's going to have to start with respect for the people who you need to persuade if you want to be heard. Shouting people down and arguing is just going to make the discussion about behaviors rather than issues, and that's a distraction that people overseas can't afford right now. I think if any one of us are hesitant to discuss these issues directly with constituents, we should check ourselves and probably consider at least having the conversation. I have found that without an audience, that the people who are advocating for peace and ceasefire have many, many salient points and many areas that we can agree on, and you can have a discussion with them. And I wouldn't shy away from that because it is an issue that's going on in Nashua, and it is an issue that's going on nationally. And we are seeing changes nationally. We're seeing things that- We're seeing things that are lines in the sand, that even our own leadership says we can't really cross, whether it's aid workers being bombed, or food being cut off. There are areas where our country nationally is taking steps, and while it should be encouraging, it's clearly not enough for many. Those are areas we can talk about, and those are areas that at least I would encourage my fellow Aldermen to talk about directly. I don't know that a resolution at this point is possible, considering the level of enmity that is being raised, but I do think it's good to have the public here, it's good to have the public expressing themselves, even if they're not always doing it the way that we would prefer. And I do appreciate the guidance that Corporation Council gives to make sure that we are thinking of the bigger pictures for the city, and I appreciate the role that President Wiltshire is trying to exercise as fairly as she can.
Alderman Bren.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to acknowledge a great event that happened over the weekend, the Nashua Soup Kitchen walk-run, 5K, 10K. I did complete the 5K in just over 34 minutes. Alderman Lopez was slightly ahead of me. I will also make a quick remark that Matty Gregg of the Board of Public Works, who was a marathon runner, and Chief Buxton, who was also a marathon runner, they ran the 10K. I was able to keep in front of them for two miles.
I'm a marathon runner.
That's the best I could ever ask for, I won't be able to duplicate that next year. But I'd like to thank all the charities that came out, that ran and raised money for the soup kitchen and shelter. It was a very great event, there were more people there than last year, and it was very fun to be part of that. Also, April 29th, just a reminder, I've already provided tickets to the President and the Vice President and others here, but the screening of the 50, put on by The Friends of the Drug Court, will be on April 29th at 6:00 PM at the Performing Arts Center. I do have extra tickets if anyone's interested. I think it'll be a great opportunity to see the people that are in, what happens to people in recovery that go through the drug court system, and there'll be a panel after the screening of the 50. The 50 is specific also to how men have worked through the drug court and recovered, got their children back, and all these other things that involve the social aspects of addiction. Let's see, I won't be here. So, my daughter's birthday is coming up, and I want to wish her happy birthday. She'll be six. I will be doing the Special Board of Aldermen meeting from Orlando, so Donna, I'll need that Zoom link. And second, well, no, fifth, seventh, eighth, I'm not very good at public speaking, apparently. You know, Bradley was here, his first or second meeting, and I did state then that I support a ceasefire with the conditions of Hamas releasing hostages. I've spoken in the past about how I don't support Benjamin Netanyahu, Bibi, or whatever his name is. I find him to be just an awful person. But I do struggle with the fact that no one from public comment has acknowledged the cruelties of Hamas, and slaughtering children themselves, hiding like cowards among civilians in hospitals and tunnels. I've also seen videos of LGBT people being, having their throats slit by Hamas and Palestine They're both bad. They're both committing astral. They're, I have not heard anyone ask to acknowledge that Hamas.
Give me five minutes. Set it free.
All right, you've had your chance to speak, enough.
So, I don't think they should continue bombing, and I don't think, and I think Hamas could also has the option to surrender, and let the Palestinian people live in peace, and have your two-state solution. But, you know, as far as the board goes, there's probably a handful of people on this board that would bring that forward, and I, one of them is a progressive, and it would just fail. And I love democracy. Continue to come here, continue to talk about it. You might change people's minds. I doubt it at this stage, but democracy is already working elsewhere. In Israel itself, they're protesting the current regime there. Biden has put conditions on factors of aid, and you'll see that battalions are withdrawing from Gaza. That's how democracy works. In autocratic nations, that's not how it works. You protest in an autocratic nation like Russia, like Saudi Arabia, and other countries, you're thrown in jail in opposition, like in Russia, they're murdered in jail. It's a struggle, but democracy works. Keep speaking, maybe you can persuade others here. Alderman Lopez seems to be moving in the right direction, and, you know, we could always bring forth a vote, just to show you that the votes aren't here, but it has to be very specific, and then we also, I'm getting complaints from constituents who hear the anti-Semitic statements about AIPAC controlling everything, and then Zionists, X, Y, Z, like, if we want a neutral resolution, we need to acknowledge that both sides have innocent people, and that there's not this weird conspiracy of control, just because someone identifies as Jewish.
All right. Thank you. Alderman Timmons.
Thank you. I like to say, everybody know I'm a veteran, and veterans normally like ceasefire, but they don't like ceasefire in one place, that means ceasefire everywhere. Right now, there is, and you can look this up on Wikipedia, or wherever you want, there's 10,000 or more major conflicts in this world. I would like ceasefire everywhere, not one place, but everywhere, because it's important that we have rural peace. And rural peace don't mean just one area, that means all the areas. My granddaughter, for instance, wrote in ceasefire. I said, what do you know about ceasefire? She said, because they are genociding in Africa. She wasn't talking about Gaza, she was talking about Africa, but she wrote in ceasefire. She want peace throughout the world. I want peace throughout the world. And ceasefire don't mean in just one place, it mean everywhere. So, if we cannot have rural peace, I can't support one area, when there's 10,000 other areas, that's in war as well. So, that's my whole thing about ceasefire. Yes, we need it, but we need it everywhere. I can't support one, I have to support them all. So, that's all I'm going to say about ceasefire. When we can do that, we have my complete support, because I do believe in ceasefire. I just don't believe in ceasefire for one area. Secondly, I would like to comment on something Dan Haley said about War 2. I was there the whole day, that particular day. We have one person that was on the ballots, and then you brought in those other people. One of them was my granddaughter, who wrote ceasefire on the ballot, which she did not get paid. She said, I wanted to do this. She wanted to do it. So, it wasn't, it was something that she learned how to do. She is young, 21 years old, and she said, I think this was the best thing I ever did the whole year, and I want to do it again. So, you have to have a love for your community, you have to have a love for your country, you have to have a love to want things right. And I got fortunate, fortunately enough, to know that my family like things right, they like peace, and we're people of color. And I know, I know, been there, done that, still doing that. So, I just want the speakers to know that I do believe in ceasefire, but not just in one area. We need the, a rural peace, period. That's my comment.
Alderman O'Brien, you all set?
Oh, I'm good.
Committee announcements. Alderman Cle.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow at 7:30, the Penechak Water Committee, Special Committee will be meeting, so those members that are on it, the time is at 7:30, not as originally scheduled for 7:00. And that's because there's a joint infrastructure MPD meeting in front of it, so we pushed it to 7:30. It is important that we all show up there, I don't think it'll be a very long meeting, but it is important that all the members show. If you can't make it, if you could let me know, so that we can get someone else in there. Thank you.
Alderman, one second, Alderman Lopez.
Human Affairs Committee is Monday at 7:00 PM here in the Alderman Chamber.
Okay, Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, Alderman Cle, stole a little bit of the thunder, but we do have a joint meeting of the Police Commissioners and the Committee of Infrastructure. I'd like to see as many members of the Infrastructure Committee there, and it seems to be following that at 7:30 start will be the Penechak meeting. Thank you.
Point of order, Madam President, I apologize, my daughter's turning seven. No, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're a tramp. I'm.
Well, you're going to be a tramp, Dad.
Come on, you bring that up every year.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to make the motion that the April 9th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Aldermen be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. We adjourn at 9:52 PM. Thank you, everyone.